Still on, we ready?
We are all ready.
I'd like to call the special meeting to order Lancaster County Council here on July the 19th. I'd like to welcome everyone here. And would you please rise and join Councilmember Brian Carnes. He's allegiance in our pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for this day that you have blessed us with, or we thank you for the opportunity to represent the citizens of Lancaster County. We pray that your wisdom would guide us in our meeting and our discussions. Be with us as we leave to go home this evening, go before us and keep us safe. From Christ and we pray, amen.
Amen. All right, we also have Mr. Louise and Mr. Mosteller joining us online. They will be participating in this meeting. And we will have roll call votes today, so I'm looking for a motion for approval of our agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion for Mr. Carnes. I have a second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Graham. Roll call, please.
Terry Graham.
Approve.
Billy Mosteller.
Approved.
Jose Luis.
Approved.
Steve Harper.
Approve.
Alan Blatman.
Approve.
Brian Carnes.
Approved.
We have unanimous approval of our agenda. Let's move on down to citizens' comments. Please bear in mind that this is not a period of dialogue with council or a question and answer period. This is your opportunity to address council of your concerns. Ask that you address your remarks to council as a body and not to any individual council member. Please speak into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes to address council. Your time will not start until you have provided your name and address. First up, we have Mr. Thomas Haggins.
Name is Thomas Haggins. My address is 5172 Flat Creek Route, that's East Springs, South Carolina, 29058. And what I'm coming to y'all today for is in reference to Timber Lane, and it's just to, we'll just do something quick here. It says, "We have been through some staff meetings, a lot of them they're one-on-one." It says, "We've come to and have spoken to a county council's meeting about Timber Lane, and it seems like nothing's happening. It seems like everything stalled out." And, you know, we'd like to have some answers, some references, some information. And it seems like my daughter wants to go ahead and get this road in use, get it up to date, get it serviced, get it up to Lancaster County standards. She's ready to use this road for her purposes. She's got land down there, and she wants to get started working on her land. And right now, and, you know, everything's unsafe with the road we see. And so, basically, that's all I got. She wants to get everything straightened out, and so she can proceed with her projects and all her stuff on her land.
Thank you, Mr. Haggins.
Thank you.
Katie Powell?
Sorry.
Okay, well, that concludes our citizens' comments. Let's move on down to our discussion action item, regional park phasing costs, presented by Woolport.
Mr. Chairman, as we have Andrew Peck come up from Woolport, this is, a couple things we want on the agenda. We were asked at the last council meeting in June to come forward with more details about the cost estimates that go into the phasing. We'll have that for you tonight. That's in your packet, so you can see some of the details for each phasing. And then, part of the conversation is to get final input from council on amenities. I will talk about schedule going forward and potential funding mechanism for that, and then, again, getting council's input about the phasing or not in context of the funding options. And so, we'll conclude that discussion after the presentation by Mr. Peck. So, take it away, Andrew.
All right, well, good afternoon, Chairman, members of the council. Again, it's my pleasure to be in front of you again, in this community, in this county, to go over tonight as was presented. We're going to look over, look over the budget, really from the questions that were asked last time. In December, we had a very preliminary cost that was also presented in some of the phasing. And then, this past six months, coming to the board, listening to comments, we've made some adjustments. But the overall cost that you'll see is pretty much the same cost. So, we're just going to go through that this afternoon. This is the master plan with the, what we're calling the development areas. We've got A through E. Again, these could be looked at as phasing. The cost is broken down such, but, again, these are really also looking at what we're calling, pretty much, the programming or the large use areas. So, that Area A is that baseball complex. So, you could see a lot of the things that come involved with that. Any particular Phase 1 of any particular project has a lot of infrastructure, has some of those things that needs to come in the road, the large parking lots and whatnot. So, that's what's included in that Area A. The Area B is what we're calling the multi-purpose field complex. And so, you can see that's in that, kind of that purple color. And then, also, Area C is the parking, again, associated with that particular programming. We're going to have to add some, a little bit different, more parking and amenities included in those multi-purpose fields. And then, Area C is the, more of the passive recreation. That's going to be some of the amphitheater. We've got the pickleball located up there, that number 12. And then, down in that lower area, 678, that's that, the playground and some of the splash pad or splash ground that we presented previous plans before. And then, Area D, that's kind of the trail system that's running around the buffer of the park. It's going to have, you know, various pedestrian bridges and whatnot, connectivity to some future development along 521 there to the right of the page or east of the site. And then, the last area is E. That's that optional property that we were looking at. That is 20 acres. Again, that's going to be what currently has a lot of the trails, has some pedestrian bridges, even a pavilion located on that particular site to help support some of that frisbee, frisbee golf. And with the cost projections, again, the, I know we presented previous plans that had either options of a smaller community center and maybe a rec center. That, these prices here are not including that. So, you can see, we're just right at about a $34 million total cost in today's or in 2024, 2024 numbers. The baseball complex is roughly around 15 million, and you can see how the cost breaks down from the multi-use fields being roughly 10 million. Passive is around 4 million. Those multi-use trails that, that Area E or D is around 2 million. And then, the expansion property, the 20-acre property, we've got about 1.5. So, we've shared in your packet, I know this is hard to see on the screen, but we did break down, and again, this was presented when we did the master plan last fall. We just, we were able to look at some of these numbers and kind of clarify these according to the new plan. We looked at all the infrastructure, whether it's the building's architecture, looking at the site costs, grading, storm, looking at the utilities, looking at all the different amenities that may be on that particular area. So, they're all broken down there. And then, you can see, we also summarized a lot of the additional costs. There's going to be some mobilization, some contingency costs that's built in, and some of the soft costs that comes with any development of this type of project. So, this baseball complex, you know, rounds out to about $15 million. And then, the multi-use field complex, same scenario. We, again, different type of amenities. The grading, storm drainage is going to be a little bit different because it's in a different site. So, we looked at all those costs to break down within this particular phase. You'll even see on this one, we do have synthetic fields, but we also have a natural turf field. It's a little bit different cost as it relates to some of those amenities. When we go through all the different subtotal costs, this particular area is roughly about 10 and a half million dollars. The passive recreation areas, again, this is the ones that have a lot of shelters, the playgrounds, a lot of the park amenities, a lot of different site furnishings that may be included, and even some small restroom buildings and some of the infrastructure that goes with that. So, we're looking at roughly about 4.3 million. The multi-use trails, as I mentioned before, we've got still some minimal clearing and grubbing. Again, this is going along some very sensitive areas, but we'll still have some of that. We've got some of the pedestrian bridges, some of the boardwalks, and some of the, a different type of landscape that we may have to come back with some remediation of some of the existing vegetation. So, we're looking about, rounding out about 2 million dollars. And then, finally, the expansion property, very similar to the last estimate, a lot of similar type of amenities, trails, the pedestrian bridges, and it's about 1.5 million. So, that is the last slide. Again, I'll get it back to the summary page. But we've also, if you recall, you know, we looked at some, when we looked at the operation costs, the total capital costs that would come in part of this park as well, that's part of the costs that we've looked at. Earlier, when we presented some, the smaller community center or even the rec center, those costs were roughly about 900,000 to about 1.6 million for the large rec center. For this particular plan, as we're presenting right now, we're looking at a total cost around 700,000. And that's broken down with the total staff salaries roughly about, right around 500,000 for this, for a year. And then, the capital cost, that's kind of that first-year cost. We're going to have some first-year costs, it's going to be included. We're looking at roughly around 175,000. And then, your ongoing operational costs beyond that, you know, with materials and whatnot, it's probably, for this particular park here, we're looking at roughly around 35,000 to 40,000 dollars. So, it's roughly about 700,000 a year for this project. And Jason's here to answer any questions that we've got as far as how we've come up with some of those numbers, but Dennis, I'll let you kind of take us from here, and any questions that the council may have.
I have a question on the multi-use field section. Now, we've got three synthetic soccer fields at 3.2 million and one natural field at 200,000. Am I to assume that if we went with all natural fields, that each one of those would be 200,000?
Yes. Yeah, and some of that will be done because of the natural field, turf field is, one is, we wanted to have a, an open, open event field. You could do a lot of, like, festivals, you could put tents, stake them down. Now, you can still do that on a synthetic field, and there's a lot of different ways to maintain and keep your synthetic field in good condition, but we wanted that flexibility end of the plan. And also, any type of large, really, really large event, we wanted the option to maybe some overflow parking should there need be. And it's just that just provides us a little bit more flexibility in that, that programming.
I'd like to, I'd like for us to get what it would cost to maintain fields, natural fields versus turf fields over the life of the fields, because, you know, turf fields do have a life, and they have to be maintained much similar to what natural fields had to be maintained. And for the cost difference in the fields, it's, it's pretty substantial.
Yeah, we do have a, there's a really good study that's out there now from Montgomery County, Maryland. Again, another county, this is not a vendor or manufacturer showing these numbers, and Macamber County's doing something very similar. So, I was not able to get their numbers, but they're in, they're looking at a study. But basically, to answer your question, A, this is a net cost as far as 20-year payback. 20, 20 years net cost on an artificial field is, is 1 million dollars, whereas, like a Kentucky bluegrass, you're looking at 1.7. So, you're almost looking, almost not double, but we're getting really close as far as that maintenance cost on that particular field with the cutting, the fertilization, the overseeding on those particular type of fields. And Bermuda drops down a little bit, which is what we would probably be looking at, and it's slightly about 200 to 300,000 dollars in increase, or roughly about 1.5, or 150,000. I'm sorry, I looked at the wrong number, 150,000 more.
Does that take into account, you know, I know replacing stuff on the synthetic fields cost, but the actual, you've got to get out there, you've got to rake the fields, you've got to, you know, you've got to prep them and stuff like that. So, you know, some of that time where you're cutting grass plus versus prepping it, it sort of balances out with each other.
It does. The biggest benefit you're going to get from any synthetic field is hours of use. It, that's the biggest thing, because even Bermuda grass in this region, it needs time to rest. And if you wear it down, you're never going to be able to get it back, and you have to close it down. So, your revenue that you would get from that rental of those fields, you're not going to have.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's really the biggest, biggest benefit of using an artificial turf.
Okay, and the numeration you've got here, A, B, C, D, is that what your suggested phasing is?
Well, at this point, we're not suggesting any phasing. These are the costs that can break down to phases, should that be what this council wants to do. So, we've broken those easily down that they can be phasing. I'm not going to say that the 15 doesn't maybe, you know, drop to 14, or it may go up to 16, but those are the, the average costs that we've got within those ranges, depending on what council wants to do with the phasing.
Okay.
But yes, these, I would take these numbers as, you could use these for phasing costs as well.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Louise has a question.
Wait, Mr. Louise.
Thank you. How big?
How big is the restroom concession pavilion?
Which, which one, at the baseball complex?
At the multi-use fields.
That's probably going to be about roughly about 2 to 3,000 square feet, a minimum of at least 2,000 square feet.
Okay, so 2 to 3,000?
Yeah, again, depending upon the programming and the size of, of any concessions in the, the restroom configuration.
Okay. And have you considered when Mr. Carnes was talking about the natural fields, have you considered tiff tough as opposed to Bermuda grass?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I'm just, I just read that off of this particular study that they're saying Bermuda, we're just using that as a common name.
Okay. And then what is the anticipated revenue from the fields? I know you had mentioned that earlier.
That's something we can get back to you on that. I think that, I know staff has looked at that, but we don't have those, those numbers finalized. But we could easily get that back and get, get a scenario as far as the, what the rent cost would be and those hours and days that, that would be rented.
Okay. And then I think my last question is, did I hear you correctly? You'd said it was about $700,000 per year for maintenance?
That was year one, wasn't it? Year one?
Yes, yes.
That wasn't maintenance, that was salaries, wasn't it?
Well.
That's, yeah, that's including salaries. That's all, all in on the operation calls.
But for year two, yeah, keep going, Mr. Luis.
No, 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 go ahead.
I say year one because that includes like trucks, mowers, things that we'd have to do some capital purchase for year one. But then ongoing for year two and on, you still have the staff costs. And then water costs, utility costs, mulch costs, striping, other things. And we said that was going to be 500.
To answer his question, if we've got salaries at 500,000, 35,000 average for ongoing, you're looking at 535,000.
For ongoing operating.
For ongoing, yes.
And where, where did the 900,000 to 1.6 million overhead costs come from?
That was previously if we had the, the community center or the large rec center in the plan, that's where you had additional staffing and costs. That doesn't include, we're not including that. I was just using that as a reference of what we presented previously.
One building would cost $900,000 because 1.6 minus 700,000 is 900,000. That's the operating cost of a community center?
There's a lot, you would have a lot more programs, a lot more staff included in that building. And we did a lot of reference on other clients that, that Wolfers worked with and projects that we've built. And those were numbers that we got back, current numbers from those clients. Forsyth County, Georgia is one of them. And Mecklenburg County was another one that we referenced to get some of those numbers.
And we have that much demand, looking at historical participation that's going to grow that much in the next couple of years too. I mean, if we don't build it, then we're not going to meet that demand. It appears we're, have a real conundrum here.
As far as the rec center or?
Well, well, if, if we're going to spend that much money on the rec center and then it's going to cost us that much more money, then I guess what the assumption is, is we have that much demand. But if we don't do it, then we're not going to meet the demand of our citizens. I don't see numbers that show us that, but.
It would be interesting to know what kind of revenue we're getting back in. I know, you know, how much do we think tournaments are going to plug into this thing? It would help evaluate what we should spend partially because we have to fund it some way or another.
And one of the things, if, when talking about those costs for the rec center, was that based upon a 25,000 square foot rec center or 50,000?
The, the total, the $900,000 was based on that smaller 25,000. And then the 1.6 is based on that 50,000 plus, the larger one.
At, at some point, we need to go ahead and finalize this one way or the other. And that'll be based on finance. And I think final numbers.
Well, to me, Steve, it still depends on our budget. Dennis, what do you, what's your outlook for our next year's budget?
So given that this park.
Not the park, just the budget in general, assume the park's not even in the equation. What do you anticipate a year from now, we're going to be looking at in the way of a budget?
In terms of revenue expenditures, I mean, clearly we adopt any county budget to preference the council. If you want to have a tax increase, no tax increase, start from there. We can have a level budget. We can have a, a smaller budget or I mean, larger budget. So I don't necessarily know based on programming going forward, our strategic plan that we're looking to adopt. Putting those pieces together will be trade-offs on how we bring the budget forward to you.
Unactually.
I would see a limited growth. So this year, if we based on this year, we had roughly $3 million in new revenue this year. We have seen the building permits and other things that slowed down. We do know other things are coming online, but I still think we will have some net revenue growth for the county budget. If that's between 1 million and 3 million, go on the lower conservative end, I think we'll have at least a million dollars in new revenue for the county.
At least what, how much?
A million dollars.
So, but we need one point, did you say 2 million to give a 3% pay raise to employees next year?
Yeah, to maintain what was provided in this year's budget. Plus, we took a million dollars from fund balance to cover that operating cost going forward. That'd be 2.4 million.
Look a million out of what?
The fund, the airport fund balance to cover the budget to reduce the millage by 2 points or 2 million.
That's money we didn't need anyway, because that money's going to be reversed by the FAA.
But for ongoing operating, instead we lowered the millage impact by using a million dollars from the reserves. So we have ongoing operating that we paid for with fund balance this year.
Well, get, get back to the airport.
Okay.
We, we took a million away. It was not a recurring cost because that's going to be covered by the FAA. So that wasn't operational monies. So you're saying a million to 2 million in new growth for next year. Okay, then the airport had no material impact on operations. Because again, that's money that we budgeted for a full build out of the airport without any FAA money. So we get the FAA money, which is roughly 1.7, 2 million dollars, whatever, whatever it is. We only took 1 million of that, so we'll have a surplus there unless the airport goes way, way over board, over budget. That should be, that should stand on its own. That has nothing to do with operational costs. So if we're only going to have 2 million in, in new money next year, we're, we're going to absorb it with just taking care of employees and no new additional capital expenditures unless we want to really hit the millage hard. And so if this were to come on board exactly a year from now, we, we really have to up the millage a tremendous amount of money to cover the overhead for this. So I am firmly of the opinion, we need to delay this at least a year. And hopefully we're going to have a turnaround in the economy. A lot of economists are saying things are looking better. Or either we only do a small portion of this because the hospitality funds are not enough to pay for the whole ride of this park. And if you want to talk about tournament monies paying for it, that's a nice thought, but we don't have a proven track record. I'm not even sure how much money we took in on the soccer fields this year, leasing them to third-party entities. But I got a feeling it's really immaterial, it's not a, a major amount to cover 700,000, 900,000 or 1.6 million in daily, I mean, annual operating cost. So, so if we brought this on and we, and we brought it in at the big, the big number, we're, we're going to use up all our new money just for that. There'll be no employee pay raises, there'll be no equipment purchases. I, I just, I just don't see how we can afford it. I just, I just really don't. I, I'm in favor of the park. I'd like to see it get started if y'all would be willing as a council to do part of it. I know that doesn't sound very sexy to do, but I think it's the prudent thing to do as we deal with taxpayer dollars.
I will, excuse me, I will say council, that we can look at this kind of standalone from the general operating budget. In terms of, this is a capital program. We've identified the hospitality revenue as the funding source for this. We've had our presentation from our financial advisor and bond council. And the current revenue and even the past trends are sufficient to go to bond to generate the 34 million. And in addition, the hospitality tax has enough to cover the bond financing for the capital and even some of the operating. And so if we have $2 million roughly a year in hospitality revenue that we're generating, that is sufficient to do a 20-year bond for a $34 million project. And so we've heard that from our financial council. The plan is to have that conversation again to show you how our financial ability to do this with hospitality tax funding. We also have, what's not been complete on here is the expansion land. We know some money for that, we have funding for that. Or if you want to do the frisbee expansion land, if you want to roll that into the bond, that's an option too to do that. So we've had a financial advisor review of this, presented to council. They did show it wasn't sufficient when we had the recreation center. Taking out the recreation center, the revenue from the hospitality tax would be sufficient to cover 34 million dollars.
And that's, that's if we don't go over budget too. So with our historical record of the way we do things around here, it always comes back at contract time a lot more than we, we actually have on paper. And, and again, I think, I think, I'd like to see the math on that, that the hospitality tax can truly cover the debt service on this. Because I don't think that it can, and it's certainly not going to cover operational. If we could be patient and build this later and keep building up the hospitality tax, so we wouldn't have to bond out so much of this. We could use part of that hospitality money to pay for the operational expenses of this, instead of taking it out of general fund. But if we're going to hurry, 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 and spend, spend, but we're, we're going to be on the edge.
And I will highlight, if you saw in here for all the phases, we did put the contingency amount in here. So you know what the contingency amount is that we're budgeting in here. It does also account for receiving the 750,000 from the state as part of the contribution. So that is recognized in here. When we think about the financing model, what are some of the other revenue streams? Some of it's from the area developer, some of that money will be credited, the money we have on hand from the hospitality tax will be credited. And so that's how we get to a bond package that can be sustained from the hospitality tax.
Do we have a scheduled presentation on a final bond package?
Yes.
Lined up so we could vote on this one way or the other?
Yes, and that's scheduled for August 14th. So for your next meeting, we would like a, what I call a green light decision from council to authorize us with our bond council. And this again, ties into a conversation we'll have to have about the detention center funding as well as the park funding. Whether you want to put those together through the installment purchase revenue bonds or not. But both those will be presented on the 14th. And so you can make that funding green light because we've got to move this forward. And then that will set us up, if you do go forward, basically to set us up for a bond sale in November. But we need the authorizing resolution August 14th to be on that path.
Even if we approve this, we're probably looking at a year before you can actually pull all the permits. Because we, our codes and regulations would allow them to, to grade. But as far as building permits and all, we can't issue them because there's not water and sewer. And we don't allow anybody, developers or whatever, to start, they can't start building houses up at Roslyn until they get final clearance from DHEC. So all, the water and sewer has to be operational. And that's six miles of sewer that's being run now, that you're probably looking at April or May or June of next year before that's even completed. So you're looking at operation probably 2025, actually opening up a park.
And if you think you're right, I mean, that's true. Just saying about the financing, the financing takes about five months. And so that, that process, three readings, of course, then getting the credit rating, then going to bond sale. So there is still a, a lead time on this.
We have this concept right now, so that you've got to do all the design plans and stuff as well. I'm thinking it was about a year and a half before we really got.
Yeah, well, it's about a year. I mean, we've got it right now, the county has a due diligence scope for us to, to do some of these things that, that you're mentioning. Even looking at, you know, coming back and looking if there's a, a business plan that needs to be done. We could do that fairly quickly to answer a lot of those questions. But we feel, again, the costs, we were just talking about that previously. I think that based on what we're seeing from the contractors that build these type of facilities, we're building some right now down in Greenwood County. And so we're seeing pretty good pricing coming in with these. So we're, we're trying to be conservative so we don't go over budget. But on parks like this, the, the good thing is, is, is back to the point, if there's a synthetic field, we need to take one out, that's, you know, a million dollars, I say. You know, or if there's a lighting package, that's 250,000. So you can get, you know, some significant, easy money to come out without really overtaking the programming way. And it could always, we design these things, you could always come back in. So it's, so a lot of those things we can look at as far as that overall budget. It could also help with, help with the operation costs as well.
But, but you're going, I would think that you're going to put in the infrastructure for a bigger phase, even if you're only going to do a small phase, is that correct?
Correct, yes. We've already been working with, with the development and we know where we're going to be tying in for our water and sewer. We've got all that cost within that phasing.
So you can do a smaller cost, then you add on.
Right.
Your cost should be lower for that on for the infrastructure.
Right, yeah, once you get all that infrastructure in.
Mr. Luis or Mr. Moss Taylor, do y'all have any comments?
I was, I was just going to add, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Moss.
You go first, go ahead, you talk.
No, I was just running the quick math on the restroom and concession stand. So that's, if I did that correctly, is about $583 per square foot at the 3,000 square foot model, which was the largest you had mentioned. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That seems excessive to me. So I, I'd like to see kind of where we're getting these costs from. To your point earlier, that if we can reduce some of these things to more of what the average cost of building and construction is, it could reduce these costs significantly.
Yeah, again, that, not, those costs could also include a lot of the, the, not so much the building itself, but some of the plazas and or spectator seating. I'm not sure which cost you're looking at, but like the baseball and the multipurpose both have spectator seating built in. So that, that cost may be part of that as well.
No, I was, I was just looking at the restroom concession stand. So for 3,000 square feet at a million 750, it's $583 per square foot. That's excessive.
And that's at the multipurpose, is that correct?
Yeah, the multipurpose.
That was in the phase B, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I will get back to you, but that, yes, I, I agree with you. I think the square feet cost that I mentioned to you was, was for a smaller building. Again, we don't have those costs on here, but we'll get those back. They're based upon the square feet. Cause we're not showing all the back of the house numbers, so we could pull that up.
Now, did anybody investigate how Kershaw was looking to build a $14 million complex while we're looking at 40 million? Did anybody contact Kershaw County and get any input from them? Cause even those residents are upset about 14 million. And yet, look at what we're looking at. Per capita, they're 60% of what we are.
Per capita, they're 60% of what we are.
Mr. Mosteller have something?
I don't know, but the, then on August 14th, we'll have the funding. We'll make a final decision on whether we're going to move forward with part of it, all of it, and other options on turf or natural grass.
Yeah, so we want to check in one more time to make sure the amenities. Do we still have all the components people were thinking of? Having the splash pad, having the playground, amphitheater, baseball, soccer, multipurpose, restrooms, just making sure the amenities, one, we've caught them all.
And I'm hearing we would, I know it's a complete guesstimate, but what kind of revenues do these parks generate?
Well, we just, we just increased the field rental fee in this year's budget, so it'll help a little bit more. But I think, yeah, I don't, nominal based upon our fee rental rates and stuff. And if you're counting league revenue, which I don't think is directly offset for the park, nominal. I don't think I can say even 100,000 or 500,000 will go to offset the annual cost.
So we shouldn't really think about it at all?
You're right, and to that point.
That was my point.
And to that point, the hospital, we'll hear on the 14th from our financial advisor that the current revenue from the hospitality tax is enough to cover the capital and some of the operating.
But any of these, any of that?
I totally disagree with that. And the reason I do that is when our financial gurus came in one time, they were saying, oh, you're taking in 2.1 million dollars a year. And that meeting, I said, no, we're taking in 1.9. And somebody said, how do you know that? And I said, because I look at annual report. Then that last meeting we had, they finally fessed up and said, yeah, we're not quite taking in 2 million a year. So we got to remember that they're not looking after our best interest. They're not going to make money unless we finance. So we've got to be careful not to be sold a bill of goods. And I think there needs to be some detailed math if you're going to sell the idea that hospitality tax is going to pay for it because I don't see it.
I think it might pay a big chunk of the capital cost, but not any of the operating cost.
Right. And I think we're going to go way over budget when this goes to contract. And that's got to be taken into consideration too. I see the contingency down there, but all, all projects have contingencies because there's going to be contingencies once they get started too.
Do the same kind of contract you do in on the jail, you got $90 million, you work with that. You put whatever you say here, and that's what you get.
That's not the way we operate though. We operate on, here's the project, so we send it to bid, he comes back, we go ahead and do it anyway. So that'd be, that'd be a nice novel concept if we want to do it that way.
We also take, I have not known us to do anything really quick with projects.
It's true.
I can sit here and we're going to spend $90 million on a detention center for 200 prisoners in this county and we won't commit $35 million to 105,000 citizens? I don't know where, I know where my priorities rank. So I know how I feel about it and my support. So that's all I'm going to say right now.
Steve, I'm all for it too, but I'm all for it to be financially responsible.
Yeah.
And we can do, we can do part of it and we can keep it well within affordability ranks based on, and I agree with the administrator about our budget next year. We're not, I said that back during our last budget session, we're not going to have much new money next year. So we've still got to cover pay raises and all this thing. We're setting ourselves up for massive millage increases if we don't act responsibly.
Well, let's, it'll be coming before council on 14th and we'll make our decisions. And that will also include funding on the detention center, will that be ready too?
Yes, we'll provide you a bonding scenario, funding scenario for both the detention center and park because we suggested they go together.
And this will be together?
That's the proposal that you'll receive on the 14th.
If they're together, the, I know they'll be together, but is there, we wouldn't, I don't think council would agree for the other revenue to pay for this park is.
No, these are set up with two distinct revenue streams for two distinct projects, and that's how it would be established.
Okay.
And we'll articulate that both with bond council doing the financial legal documents on that and what it takes to do that. And then with the financial advisor also going through numbers with you.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Proposal for a new fleet operations builder presented by Mr. Tim Green, the project manager. Mr. Green, come forward.
Mr. Chairman, as Tim comes forward, I don't know if this is Tim's first presentation to council or not. So welcome, Tim, as our project manager for his first presentation. This is a project you all are very familiar with. You've had prior conversations going back to 2019 about consideration was had by council in the past about a fleet operations facility, a new one. The facility needs have not changed over the last four years since you've had this conversation. And so we want to bring the concept forward as a just discussion item. And then again, talk about potential funding options for this facility and the value and importance it plays for our overall operations. So if I can ask Mr. Green to present how we've got here and what we're looking at.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mosteller, and thank you all for the opportunity to be here. We've got to cover four key elements in this presentation, the operations, the fleet operations staff, their inventory of our fleet service and the maintenance facility that we're proposing for you today. First off, fleet operations, their key service facility, key service delivery is, of course, is to provide preventive maintenance on our fleet and keep our vehicle assets on the road. They do that through, through the staff that they have. I have about nine people on staff out there, including four technicians to maintain our This is a breakdown of the fleet. We have just under 600 vehicles on the road. The, if you add up the emergency services vehicles, you'll see that that comes to about 322 of that total, which is about 54% of our total fleet. And since emergency services is the majority of our fleet, this is, this is the number of vehicles they have to maintain and keep on the road at any given time. EMS has to have 15 ambulances, seven quick response vehicles. Sheriff's office has to have 140 vehicles ready. That is the vehicles for the sheriff's deputies. They do have four shifts in the sheriff's department and have to keep about 20 vehicles per shift running. And the 140, that's critical category is how they describe it. And then the fire apparatus, they have to have every one of their vehicles ready at any given time, including a spare engine and one spare tanker truck. Some of the changes and some of the challenges that fleet operations has had over the past five years, they do have moved to computer software to diagnose and repair vehicles. Almost all diagnostics of the vehicles begin with a technician and a computer. They are having supply chain challenges. There's four-month delays on vehicle parts for ambulances. They're experiencing increased cost of new vehicle purchases. And then when they do get new vehicles purchased, it takes up to two years for some of them to arrive on the road. So that means more costly repairs to the vehicles that they have on the road. I won't read through these metrics, but these are just basically metrics of what fleet operations has done over the past year in terms of tires, oil, batteries, wiper blades, and brake, brake parts. It just gives you a picture of what they do in a given year. And how much time does it take for them to do service on vehicles? About 45 minutes per passenger car, two and a half hours for ambulances, five hours for public works vehicles. And I did learn that the fire engines and tankers, they do their preventive service at the stations so that they're able to keep those vehicles ready for service, whereas major repair has to go to fleet operations. And the current facility, just for a few descriptions about that facility, it's 6,000 square feet. It is a metal building. It has four bays, that's two vehicles per bay, or one ambulance or one large vehicle per bay in service. And that facility was built in 1970 and had some additions made to it in 1976, so it's over 50 years old. Some of the deficiencies that they're experiencing out there is shown on the slide there. I won't read all of them, but there's a few of the key ones. No fire protection sprinkler system, they're not up to building code, and some of their energy efficiencies do not exist. This is the same, same deficiencies they had back in 2019 when it was originally proposed. These are just a few pictures of things that I took when I visited the site. The outdoor, the outdoor skin is rusting, they're having mold inside the building. They also have tile that's asbestos containing material, about 132 square feet of tile has asbestos. This is a picture of the, just inside the bay, first bay. And that wall is the separation between the bays and the administrative offices. And that insulation is spray on, it's also flammable, it's very highly combustible and is in definite need of, is a definite concern for us. One of the other concerns is unsecured insulation in the ceiling of the facility. What you see is some insulation that's hanging down. There's a number of contributing factors for that. One is a leaking roof that gets the insulation wet. Thermal expansion, building contracts and expands with the seasons, so the fasteners become loose. This next slide is the tire storage facility. They do have tires inside the facility and some tires stored in these shipping containers This is photographs of inside the administrative office. The left side shows the parts area and the right side shows the administrative office area. And if you see that pole in the middle of the room, it holds up the ceiling. So it is sagging and showing some signs of wear and tear inside. This next slide is the lockers. It's just the size of a closet, so not a rough room for too many people to get in there and use those lockers. And then the director's office is on the right. This is a couple of photographs of the holes in the siding. You can clearly see the hole in the siding on the left side, that's just inside the front door of the facility. And on the right side, they didn't come out very good in the picture, but trust me, there's plenty of holes in the side of that. That's the back wall of the facility. So what was proposed in 2019 is just over 12,000 square feet. That provided six service bays on the west side and two high service bays on the east side. The six service bays for smaller vehicles and the two high service bays for larger And that's roughly two times the current size of the current, size of the current facility. And this is just a floor plan of what was proposed back in 2019. And the estimated construction cost of that facility at that time in 2019 was about $3.4 And then this is just an aerial view of the site plan. I know a few of you have some questions about the specifications that was proposed for that facility. It is a metal, well, a steel structure building on a concrete slab. The roof would be standing seam metal roof and the metal, the walls would be a metal insulated panel. And this is what it looked like back in 2019 through our artist renderings that the architect prepared. This is the front of the facility. And then this is the rear of a facility. So what we're proposing upcoming is basically using that same footprint we had in 2019 and adding two service bays for the low side and one high service bay on the east side of the facility. Basically the same footprint. And that's, that's what you see in this photograph. So you see, we just added the two bays on the left and one bay on the right. And then this is one proposed location, which is the same, same location we had back in 2019. It would be on the same site as the current facility. We do with the expansion of the high service bay on the east side, we would have to construct a retaining wall on that side to fit it in that footprint. And we also looked at one other location just to the east, trying to turn that footprint about 90 degrees and fitting it on the site as you see there with the hopes that we could salvage the, the old fleet maintenance facility and turn it into some other use. And these are the proposed cost or currently planning level cost of the, of the facility that was prepared by our architectural staff. And existing location, about $7 million total, that includes everything, construction, soft cost, architectural fees, permitting, and contingencies. And then the new building at the new location was roughly the same, so we just rounded that up to the same number. And then repurposing the old facility is $3 million, and that's just an estimate. It basically calls for gutting the entire facility, stripping off the skin, putting new roof, new skin, and redoing that facility. And that is end of the, of the presentation I have. There's a number of folks here, our architects is here and some of the fleet operations staff are here if you have any questions.
Anyone want to start?
I love that roof design.
You know, my concern is they looked out there, there's a lot of rock on that site, isn't there? So is this included? What kind of grading or, you know? And we have asked about a master plan for that whole property out there. Is this the new location, that be part of the master plan?
I believe it would. We have talked about a master plan, but this facility is the higher priority, as I understand.
I definitely agree. I mean, that building's useful life has been over years ago and the former administrator wouldn't agree with what the council, with what we wanted to do and what he wanted to do didn't match up, so we didn't fund it.
But we'll say, in terms of the master plan, depending upon location, which also we'll get back to the rock issue, depending upon the location, one of the sites was what we call more up on the hill where we do have building maintenance, we do have our roads and public works kind of next to the gate that goes back to the convenience site. That's closer to the old EMS station where our public works, the brick building where Hope is. So by put, if you choose to go forward and you want to put it up there, that kind of sets the table for the master plan going forward. Because basically, if you put the fleet building, what I call at the top of the hill, there'd basically be three buildings, some are metal, some are old, that we would demolish. And that would be part of the start. But then also for the rock, if you saw from the one, if you make it right next to where the current facility is, we think that the rock impact is minimal because we're still kind of in the same footprint.
I just, I don't see the justification. I couldn't justify spending $3 million on stripping that building down and trying to make something out of it.
Yeah, no, we agree that it's an option. We want to make sure you had all options.
That's just my personal opinion.
But as you think about one, so why would that scenario there is if you do the master plan, so to speak, and we take down those three buildings at the top of the hill to do the new fleet, that could be an option. We have some other room where the current or old EMS headquarters used to be. Or if you want to put building maintenance and some other facilities, you could do that with upfitting the old fleet building if you go forward. So just wanted you to know that that's an option. As we said initially, the price tag, $7 million. This has been thought for financing that we do have capacity in general obligation bonds. We have heard from our financial council and bond council, we have about $22 million in capacity. The thought would be general obligation bonds. The thought would be general obligation bonds to cover this facility if you want to go forward.
We would have debt millage.
Yes, yes, it would be debt millage.
We'd be adding, even though we told our taxpayers we had no, we didn't increase your millage much, but reliable to put this debt millage on there plus increase, substantial increase in millage next year, so.
My biggest concern right now is that to me, a project, when I say dirt move is when I consider a project started. And right now, we got a office renovation up here. We got a building for an EMS bus, we bought that big bus, it's got to be built. We got the coroner's office. If we move forward to the county park, we got to build it. We got the detention center. There's also an evidence building. We got the airport terminal. We also, and then we got an evidence storage facility. And the, also in the next couple of years, we have got a heat springs, a EMS station is scheduled to be built down there.
And Van Wyck.
And Van Wyck.
Van Wyck.
Yeah.
Also is on that.
Yeah, and I'm just, I, I, you know, what kind of timeline are we looking at? Because I'd, I'd like to see some of this other stuff needs to get going.
Well, they all of them have their own timeline, meaning the coroner's office, we're almost to the bid phase. You know the regional park schedule. We can't start the EMS stations as a capital product sales tax. So, I mean, they all have their own timeline. We do have very capable project managers, Mr. Green and also Mr. Alexander, who are helping to lead these. So they all have their own timeline. We're moving in tandem, we're able to take on multiple projects. So when the needs are there, we try to address them.
I, I agree with you.
Mr. Chair.
If you haven't been to, I think everybody's been out there.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, I totally agree with you on that. We've got too many projects going right now to start anything else. I, I totally against starting anything else right now. And as, as Councilman Blackman was talking about a while ago, the funding, we, you know, we've built, we've got a $100 million jail detention center. We've got a $34,000, $34 million park. And, and, and we want to borrow more money for this. I, I, I think we just need to back off a little bit right now. I, I can't support this right now.
Mr. Chairman, we have a facility that is antiquated and out of really usable service. And it was that way four years ago and it's gotten even worse now. So, I mean, we need to look hard at, at how we're going to do this. Because, you know, our fleet is not getting any smaller. The, the complexities of what the, the service people have to work on is not getting any easier. And the facility is definitely not getting any better. So unless we want to put money into that facility to, to put a Band-Aid on it before we do something, which I think is just money, throwing good money after bad money at that point, we need to look at how we can make, accomplish this.
You know, there, there's kind of some discussion both ways, but for council to make a decision, well, will you be bringing forth a proposal to council for us to consider, do you vote up or down?
This is for discussion? Looking for guidance from council on this, if this is something?
You know, it's kind of both ways, but I, there's, there's definitely, there's a, it's, that's not a want. I mean, you know, the $7 million seems out of line to me. But it, it, it is definitely a need. It's our, probably the worst facility this county has.
So I would, my thought would be is that based on the conversation, we will go forward a little bit more to try to get some better pricing numbers for you. So we can ask our architect, re-engage with the architect to start putting some more numbers to this, bring it back for you again for consideration, probably be two months, and then see if you all want to proceed or not.
I would like to know, I would like to know what's going, what the debt millage is going to be.
Mr. Cato, would you, would y'all like to make any comment? Because I see we, we have Brandon back there and Mr. Cato. I don't mind, I don't mind hearing from them if they got something else to add.
No, sir, thank you for the consideration. What we would just add is it, it is the priority. I know we mentioned we, we are working on a master plan for the property out there, but the fleet ops, no matter which location it is, that kind of hinges on how we would plan to develop a master plan around on that property. Definitely can just come up here as being fleet ops, public works, building maintenance, all kind of combined. That, that building right there is the worst. None of them are great up there, but that one is by far the highest priority. Thank you.
The only thing I would like to add is if you think it's not needed, I invite all y'all to come this week when it's 120 in that building and we underneath a 200 degree car with nowhere to go cool off, and then tell us you would do what we do every day for this county. This ain't no four-year-old project. We talked about this 11 years ago and councils kicked it, kicked it, kicked it. You know, eventually somebody will get hurt, somebody will die in that shop because of the heat and it's going to be on y'all. I've been saying it for years, something needs to be done. We're not up to code on anything. We don't have no ventilation. We just work, we do what we're supposed to do. And we expect y'all to help us, but that ain't never happened. And that's all I got to say.
All right, thank you. All right, so what are we looking at, a month, two months?
Probably two months and we'll also work on the debt millage, try to factor that in, but try to get some more hard numbers for you.
Kind of a definite proposal for council to consider. So to everybody, I mean, thank you, Mr. Green.
I mean, I think there, there is a need for it. We just got to figure out how to do it.
All right, discussion of ordinance 2023-1846 regarding establishing a policy and procedure for naming rights.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cloudon or who is?
I'll just take this one. This is something that was originally brought back at the March COW and then council's had some more information. There's been a couple of different tweaks with based upon council feedback. A lot of it had to talk, what council had raised earlier was about how do you recognize honorees with a name on a county facility? If they're deceased, for how long? We clarified that deceased is outlined throughout the document. Also talking about if financial contributions were made, what happens if there are new naming rights that come up through that? We talked about requiring unanimous vote of council to honor someone with this. So we made several different changes to this based upon council feedback. We did say deceased for a minimum of three years throughout. If an individual, a group of business make a significant donation, the money to the facilities, council can talk about they want to address that going to some repayment or anything. But also we have criteria along there. We do specifically talk about renaming, where I'm talking about what is a useful life? There was a question about at what point in time is a useful life? So we kind of outlined that there. And then also if there are other designated for another use by the county, how we address that. So we offer this for your feedback and consideration again. We think this will help us as we try to better market and maximize revenue for the new facilities that we have. So we think it's important to move forward to use this policy or have this established before we go out and do some aggressive sponsorship and marketing to be able to offer maybe naming rights. But if there are some citizens who are meritorious or worthy that you'd like to do, knowing that we do have several facilities coming online. So I think the timing is right as we think about a regional park, as we think about other facilities coming online, to make sure we have this policy in place first and then we can start promoting it. So we offer that for your consideration this afternoon. And we can, depending upon feedback, we could then put this for a first reading on the August 14th agenda.
Is there any comments on anything in this ordinance that you like? Mr. Louise or Mr. Marsh Tyler, any comments?
Uh, no comment. Not at this time.
All right, so this will come before us.
First reading on August 14th.
Okay, all right.
And it'll be, should be similar to what you see today. It'll come forward for first reading.
All right, thank you. Let's move on down to discussion regarding meeting structures and financial policies for boards and commissions, Mr. Marsh Tyler.
Mr. Chairman, we bring this forward. We've had some questions lately as we highlight in the agenda summary. Over the course of time, you have in front of you a list. The county council has chosen to create 24 advisory boards in some form or fashion. Some state statutes have quasi judicial, some are purely advisory. We also recognize some that were created by the state, for instance, the CTC, how some of those are done. So we have a variety of different boards and commissions that have been created over time. And so we have found out through different establishing ordinances that not all boards are clear or staff based upon how do boards operate? Meaning what does it take to get things on the border committee agenda? Some of their voting structure? And even we have three boards on there that we've acknowledged, number two, six, and seven, that actually also get limited amount of county funding and about how that county funding is utilized, monitored, or communicated. So we want to talk about that a little bit. So what we have in front of you also for your agenda attachment today is basically in the council's rules of operation or rules of procedures, it says in the code for us, section 2-42, is that the rules shall apply to all meetings of the county council, including the committee meetings, but also to all boards and commissions for which the county appoints a majority of the members. So basically, it says that committees and boards have to follow the same rules that county has for itself. And then it also then basically defers to Roberts Rules of Orders, kind of in addition to what you've outlined. For instance, we had the issue with quorum today. So that's stipulated. So going forward, we want to better communicate to all the boards that following your rules and supplemented by Roberts Rules of Orders, it says that to get anything on the agenda for council is at the chair's discretion. So we would offer that the same, but again, in consultation, we'd like to say with the liaison or the chairman and I, with the administrator work on the agenda. But to think about as of now, it's stipulated the chair is the one who sets the agenda. So that can be the de facto for every board and committee.
Is it a rule though, I mean, it's a rule amongst councils since I've been here, that if, if I don't want something on the agenda, that's fine. But if four councilmen approach me, is that written? We've, you know, whether I was chair or anybody, we've always, if you've got four people, members of council that wants something on the agenda, you know, you've got to put it on there. Is that written in our codes?
It was previously, but in 2020, I believe, as a result of COVID, it would appear your rules were rewritten and a lot of those things were removed. Whether intentionally or inadvertently, that happened.
I, I think that, that needs to be part, that needs to be placed back in because nobody don't need that much power.
And so going, going through this, and also we had for council the question about what does abstain vote mean? How does it count? A lot of those things have not been delineated out in your rules. But we did find, looking at this, that some of council's rules have gone away from action that happened in 2020. For instance, right now, council, and this applies to committees too, council has no standing committees. There is no structure for you to create committees again. It's just inadvertent, I guess, when you're doing some COVID quick things. But it's things like that we want to bring back to you, your rules that somehow got dropped out. But.
But that's where we went to committees a whole.
Like a format for?
Rules for council, rules of procedure?
There's, there's a model rules, but it doesn't go specifically into whatever standing committees you would all would want or ad hocs or your committees of the whole or anything like that. So it doesn't get specific because it's a generic template for counties to follow in general, but with every county being different, they expect you to take those and modify them to your needs. And it appears that when that rewrite was done in, I think it was passed in August of 2020, a lot of this stuff was dropped out in order to meet the needs of COVID. A lot of electronic things were addressed, obviously because that was a big need back there then. But a lot of other stuff was completely removed and gone and doesn't exist either in Roberts Rules specifically because Roberts Rules isn't going to address your standing committees and it's not addressed in the SEAC model rules because they don't know the specifics of what each county would need either.
So we do see a two-step process here. One, bring back to let you know what fell out in August 2020, but even suggesting some things that even those are silent on in terms of how our votes counted, if abstain or whatever it may be. And then even the quorum question with electronic voting, understanding that. So there's some other things to clarify or review based.
I think we definitely need to re, renew all of them. And we, once we do all this and we get it all done, then I think there should be a booklet printed for every council member. And when new council members come on board, they need to be handed that booklet and say, this is how we operate.
Right, so we'll bring that forward. Kind of specific to, again, the committees and boards that have been formed over time. One of the other things is we've understood is that some of these boards and commissions have tried to create subcommittees to do some of the work of the boards. Don't know if you want to encourage that, discourage that. But what we found is that they have any subcommittee meeting or committee meeting has to be posted in minutes. We've found out that's maybe not been happening like we thought. So again, we need the liaisons to make sure that they communicate that if they're going to have a committee or subcommittee. But again, we really don't have a mechanism right now for them to create that because you all don't have that. So that's where the tandem is going to have to play out to do your rules first and then come back to make sure all the boards and commissions are structured the same.
Are there committees and boards that require the attorney to be present?
Does an attorney be present?
The county attorney.
I can't think of that, there's no stipulation. I don't think in the ordinance is.
There should be for the things like the BZA because they're discussing stuff and they make a decision. The next thing it goes to a circuit court, it doesn't go anywhere. And I've served on that BZA committee and there was question itself on legal nature that at that time, the attorney did attend.
Right, and I think Ms. Merchipont will address that.
Councilmember Graham, the issue there is because the county attorney works on a daily basis with planning, which is a party in front of the BZA, which is a quasi judicial entity, to your point. So anything that they rule on goes directly to the circuit court of the state of South Carolina if, if someone is aggrieved by their decision. But the county attorney works with the planning staff and they are a party to that action. So therefore, the county attorney cannot advise the BZ, BZA in terms of how to rule or whether the four factors apply or et cetera, et cetera. But the county attorney can sit and advise them as to procedure to keep them walking down the straight path between the ditches, as I like to tell them. And I have been at one of their meetings, as they don't meet often. I've been at one of their meetings and tried to help make sure that that stayed correct with the procedure. But their decisions cannot be influenced or directed by the county attorney.
But it's not, yeah, but they might have a legal question that needs an answer.
If it's regarding procedure, that's, that's the only questions that can be answered.
Well, they answered more than that, but that's.
It was a few months ago, I had my representative on the BZA inform me that he wanted to rotate off. And, and I asked for the training materials for the BZA group and I haven't gotten it yet. But I was told that they're one of the most trained groups we have. But I don't know what they're being trained because my guy was telling me things that I didn't think was true, but I couldn't dispute it because I've not been apprised of whatever it is they're being trained to do. So I think that's important that we, as a board, know. I'm just using them as the example, the easy example. Because my guy was a good guy, very conscientious, but just felt like the function of the BZA was not what he thought it should be and at the same time, not what I thought it should be. So I would love to get those training materials to understand what they're being taught to do. Number two is, should we, we talk about, well, maybe fee boards are different, but. It was a few months ago, I had my representative on the BZA inform me that he wanted to rotate off. And, and I asked for the training materials for the BZA group, and I haven't gotten it yet, but I was told that they're one of the most trained groups we have. But I don't know what they're being trained, because my guy was telling me things that I didn't think was true, but I couldn't dispute it because I've not been apprised of whatever it is they're being trained to do. So I think that's important that we, as a board, know, I'm just using them as the example, the easy example, because my guy was a good guy, very conscientious, but just felt like the function of the BZA was not what he thought it should be, and at the same time, not what I thought it should be. So I would love to get those training materials to understand what they're being taught to do. Number two is, should we, we talk about, well, maybe fee boards are different, but advisory committees, advisory board, advisory committee, should all these be changed to the same terminology unless they're truly something other than, than advisory board? And if they aren't advisory board, if all they're doing is going to a meeting and receiving information, they're not providing any advisory services to us. And the one that comes to my mind, of course, is the airport one, because I've gotten complaints from two of the advisory board members saying that they're not voting on issues, they're not talking about future issues. It's all being told to them what's going to happen and how it's going to happen with no input or no thought from them as to what would be the proper thing for our airport. So I, I think we've, we've got, we've got some homework to do on all this.
I think that's one thing we're looking at where it would be the same, they would have the same rules as county council, whatever. But all, I think there's some best conception, because I think we're all, they're all allowed to make recommendations in the, like the airport. I think, you know, I don't know if they were told they couldn't, or they couldn't vote. I don't know the story, but they can, I, I checked in and they can make recommendations.
Mr. Chairman and Councilmember Blackman, if, if I may, to your point, some of these boards and commissions, i.e. the BZA, is set up statutorily by state law. So those things are going to have a different standard than, than the others. But one of the projects that I've advised, Mr. Marshall, that I was going to take on was go through, because a lot of these are created by ordinance, and we need to look and see what powers were given, much like we were discussing at the council meeting Monday evening, the fee board, what powers they were given, and then what you all were doing with them. Now, we need to see what powers those were to see, are they truly advisory, or do they have power? And then we can determine whether they should all be called advisory boards, or whether they're true boards and commissions that have some level of authority like the BZA, or if they are set up by statutory law, then we can figure out what that is. And we're going to try to put together a chart of what all those are, so that everyone has a better understanding of what all these boards and commissions do, what their powers are, and, and how they're set up, what they're operating by, because some may require that they have bylaws, some may not. BZA had to have its own rules of procedure because they are quasi judicial. So we're going to try to figure out exactly through the ordinances that were set up for all of these boards, these 24 boards and commissions, exactly what they have and what they don't have, so we can clarify some of those issues.
Like the BZA, usually you want somebody that's got some background in zoning, or building, real estate, or homeowner association, or just something. Can council put in qualifications? Does anybody else, is that normal?
Mr. Chairman, I have, in my experience, I have seen that, where it does not necessarily have to be from your seven districts, one member from each seven districts. You can put in those ordinances, which will be part of the project. We're looking at what the enabling ordinances said as to the membership, what are the qualifications for that. So certainly, it would require amending those ordinances to change those things, but that is something that can be done. And I have seen that done in other jurisdictions, where for particular boards and commissions, like the BZA, or your planning commission, or your Board of Assessment Appeals, for example, you want to have people in those industries that deal with those things, so they have a good understanding of exactly what's coming before them.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think we all agree with that.
Well, sometimes it's hard to get people to serve.
Be careful we don't restrict ourselves in a corner.
Yeah.
But, but I would, I would like to get the BZA training materials as soon as possible.
You know, when I was on the BZA, I pushed for that and I never got it. And I had no BZA experience and I was put on there.
I've been told they're one of the most trained groups we have.
They certainly weren't when I was on there.
Councilmember Blackman, by statutory law, there again, they are required to be trained. My understanding is the SEAC provides that training for the most part, but I can tell you in discussion with Director Harden, that she and I have discussed having myself, as well as some other people who deal with BZAs, come in and train them in addition on top of that, so that we can make sure they're getting all the training they need.
Do we have materials that's presented to them when they come on board? Because I've got a new member getting ready to come on board, and he's going to need, he or she will need something to be trained. And, and I would like to know what they're being trained, so when they come to me whining, complaining, or whatever, I can address maybe some of their issues.
So Councilmember Blackman, when they receive a letter, and I'm happy to start copying council members on this, or their email when they come on board and they've been appointed for planning and BZA only, they receive an email from me saying, these are your training requirements, and those are now done online. The first six hours of orientation can be done through the SEAC, and they get certificates. That has to be done within the first year that they are on that board. And then every year thereafter, they have to have three hours. SEAC usually does a yearly training that is three hours, and we try to, or I try to coordinate that through the planning department, and where people can come in person, but they can do it on their own, again, through the SEAC website. So they receive their training requirements when they come on board. That's all I can say. And I'm, and again, I'm happy to start.
I'm glad that's changed since the time I was on there, which was 2016.
I only started in 2017, so.
Can you send me the links to those?
I absolutely can.
If you want the training material, you got to go online and get it.
Yeah.
Correct. And they have to get a login, and I tell them all of that. And, and again, I am happy to start copying council when they get those, so that y'all are aware of what they have to do. And if you want, if I see heads nodding.
I'd be interested in seeing it, because since I was on that committee.
Okay, I sure will.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Blackman, I think you do have to have, as, as Sherry said, a login, so we can contact the SEAC. We have contacts there. We'll ask them if they can provide those materials to us, as opposed to needing to log in to get them.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
My understanding, there's, there's a guy around the state that, that goes around and goes to different counties and, and teaches these BZA how to perform and, and all the rules and regulations of everything. I think we need to check into that and see if they could come, possibly come in and train our people.
Councilmember Mosteller, I, I believe, yes, there is someone from the SEAC who does it. And what you may be referring to is there is another county attorney that is my colleague that does some training on this. That may be who you're talking about, but he does not specifically go around the state training. He just offered to train here. That would be apart from the SEAC.
Okay, this is, this one's from a neighboring county.
That's who I'm talking about. That would be the Aiken County Attorney. Yes, sir.
The which attorney?
He's with Aiken County. He was formerly with Richland County.
Uh, no, I don't think that's the one. I think this one was more from the Chester area.
I can check with her as well. That's Joanie Winters, and she's the Chester County Attorney. I can see if she does that, but I'm not aware that she does. But I'll check.
I, I'm not, I'm not sure as an attorney. I think it's somebody that, that, that was in the BZA and all, and they're, they're going around the, around the state doing this, or, or going around different places, my understanding.
About two.
I've been told this for several people.
Sorry. I'm sorry. I, I just wanted to also let council know that about two years ago, we did bring in John Deloach from SEAC to do training with planning and Board of Zoning Appeals.
So we have resources. To maybe wind down this conversation, specific to voting, not voting, as I said, from the information we presented to you today, your current code and rules say all appointed boards, committees follow your rules and Roberts' Rules of Orders. So the airport advisory board, every other board can vote, in many cases should vote, if they have some recommendations or information they want to submit. So we are going to clarify with all the staff liaisons to the committees, that information. But again, I think we've got to do some work on the council end to make sure that your rules are tight and address what you want to make sure that we have the effective meetings. I mean, the rules are to have effective meetings, to make sure that it helps people understand process procedures. So we'll bring back some things related to the code for council rules, knowing that it will then translate on down to the appointed boards and committees.
Just a suggestion, maybe y'all could have a lunch one day for all your chairman.
Yeah.
Your committees and kind of give them a little presentation or something. That's, I'm not wanting to do your job, but that's just a, a thought to let them know what's expected and the rules they go by.
And I wouldn't think these committee, well, some of them may get into where you can get sort of in-depth in Roberts', but I would think that a lot of them, they don't really have a, have a book of Roberts' Rules of Order there. So if we could probably get as specific as possible to where they don't have to get out of those guidelines and get into the weeds, that would be good.
Yeah, because if y'all start making different motions on me, I'm looking at lawyer.
Also too, I want to point out that we did adopt under 243 there, the model rules of parliamentary procedure for South Carolina counties. And, and what we're saying is that's our primary source that we're going to use, but if in fact it's not addressed there, we will go to the most recent edition of Robert Rules of Newly Revised, Roberts' Rules of Order Newly Revised. That would be our backup.
So, and actually, two issues I want to make sure we convey to you, is that we do have a current committee looking to meet, but because of vacancies, they may not have quorum. And so we do have an attendance policy. And again, based upon rules, is that if someone has two absences from a meeting with no identified excuse or whatever, the chairman is to notify the clerk, and the clerk is to send a basically termination letter. Thank you for your service. I don't think we've been one as diligent on knowing some of the attendance requirements from the committees, from the chairs, or should come from the staff liaison, but I want to make sure everyone's comfortable if we start moving on this, that your appointees may be getting letters. And also, one of the rules you want to consider is that some other jurisdictions have a year gap between someone can be reappointed or serve again. That may be something to consider as well, but we may see more absent, more termination letters for better note going out.
Yeah. Also, if council wants to remove somebody else from a board, they have to give just cause or something? It's not just a simple thing of saying, hey, no, we don't want you anymore on there.
That is, usually it's the term, obviously, but there are rules, and, and I don't know that you have them, but that's something else we can look at, that if there is a reason to remove them, then yes, council members, I mean, council can remove someone. Usually it's for cause, though.
Yeah.
I know there are other different guidelines outside of Roberts' that are there. Is there another author or whatever that's put together one that would be more conducive, because Roberts is very broad?
So I think you're talking, the General Assembly in the state of South Carolina does not use Roberts' Rules. It uses something different. Most state, most of the counties, and I think maybe all the counties in this state do use Roberts', but I don't think there's anything that says specifically, it is up to you how, what you want to use. So we can certainly look at what the General Assembly uses as well, because as, as you know, if you ever watched their sessions and their, their meetings, they are very much different in their rules and the way they handle things than the way Roberts' Rules handles things. But typically.
There's other books out there.
There are. Typically, in, in other states, I've practiced in another state at one point, too, Roberts' Rules seems to be the one used for smaller boards and commissions. Other rules are used for the larger assemblies, but there, there's nothing I know of that says, don't. It's just conventional to use Roberts' Rules.
And then the last, so that's attendance. And then lastly, I'm not sure if council's aware about, we do have these three that do expend some amount of funds, very nominal, I mean, combined, but we do not have the financial regulations on these, meaning the number two group there, they, they do have funding because they also get training in Columbia, so they'll go off and do some training, but also they use some funds to generate for some area nonprofits. And I don't know if we want them to be utilizing county funds for nonprofits of their choosing without council weighing in on that. And so again, these are council-created boards and commissions. They report to you. Certainly through our staff liaisons, we help guide them along, but if you all want to help some more parameters. And then if you look at maybe number six, they actually use things for miscellaneous things to help further their mission. If you don't want us to have open-ended requests for funding for boards and commissions, we can certainly enforce that. And then on number seven, they do use that for some of the museum purchases across the way, but historical markers too. So there are some things that are within county realm, historical markers are the things, but some of these other ones, just so you know, really are more open-ended than I, I knew. And so now that I've come across this, I want to make sure you all know, and I don't know if you've had these conversations in the past or not, or if we say any expenditure by a committee needs to be brought to council first, or if you want to come to the administrator. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that.
Oh, no, I have a, what about the library board? There's a library board that's, that's, they, they, can they spend money like they want to, or does it have to be approved?
They have statutory.
That's what I thought.
Powers that we follow through. Yeah, yeah. So, and so going through their statute, I mean, go to letter the statutes, but really, they do have a bit more leeway or different structure than what was county.
Because they're state, because they got, they have state rules.
Right.
We ready to move on?
Yeah, so I just bring that to your attention. So as an action step.
This is our workshop. This is classified as a meeting, so business, a vote can be taken on an item. In this next one, this is discussion around potentially amending the intergovernmental fire rescue service contract with the town of Kershaw fire contract. And Mr. Marshall's going to discuss this, but at some point, if someone wants to make a recommendation, they can, they can make a proposal, and then would a resolution or an ordinance be, or it would, there would be immediate action on this, or what, 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 what would happen?
It, it would just need, it would just need a motion.
But I mean, for, if, if somebody makes a proposal, it could be finalized at this meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, but you would follow up with a budgetary ordinance amendment though, right?
It depends, yes, it depends on what the proposal is. But yes, if you're going to expend funds, then that would, part of the motion could be to amend the budget that we, but you're right, it does, that has three votes to it, but if you do, yeah. So we'd come back with a budget amendment.
I would, let's, let's go with the discussion.
Well, I'd, I'd like to know, I've got a question. Didn't we vote on this already as a council? And it's coming back through this way, so how's this, how's this, is this not a motion to reconsider, or what?
It cannot be reconsidered, Councilmember Graham, because it is my understanding that the town of Kershaw already accepted what you all did, which was to approve the contract as it was sent over. They are now requesting an amendment to the contract that you all.
So it's just a new, all right.
It's just an amendment to a contract that exists. That's what it would be.
I just wanted to clarify that point.
Yes, yes, sir.
You're right. The topic is the same. The conversation is the same from what you remember from the last meeting of the council in June. But because the contract's been signed and executed, the amendment or the conversation is framed a little bit differently than the last time. So we did put together an agenda item for you in front of you, that we, as you may recall, we do have a long-term contract, or we've done a contract for the town of Kershaw for fire services, where we assign three fire personnel there, a captain, a firefighter, and lieutenant. And under the arrangement is that the town pays for those two of the three positions, as well as some of the training equipment associated with that, and then the county pays for one, and that was the lieutenant position. And then in addition to that, we provide some other financial assistance to the town as we do other fire departments for some of their capital costs, their utility costs, some of the equipment, training costs. And so on here, we currently have a signed contract for 211,651, and that identifies the salary and benefit costs for the captain position they're currently paying for, and for the firefighter position that they're currently paying for. So that gives you some context of the amount of dollar amount, if there's some conversation around pay and supporting a different structure in the contract than our one position that we currently pay for. So I offer that information, knowing that you had a conversation once about this. If you want to have another one, we have some of the information for you. If you want to have another one, we have some of the information for you. And the town did request, so there is a attached letter from the mayor on behalf of town council.
To get the discussion moving, I'll make a motion that we amend our contract with the Kershaw, town of Kershaw, so that we will pay for the, currently we're paying for the lieutenant, right?
Correct.
And then we'll pay for the firefighter, and they'll pay for the captain.
And so the salary and benefits for the firefighter position is $65,349.20.
And again, y'all, if, if town of Kershaw wasn't incorporated, this is a very strategic fire department that we would be supporting anyway. And the list of expenses that I saw just...
We need to get a second.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
I'll second, get it on the floor.
I have a motion for Mr. Blackman, second.
Can you say that motion again, because I didn't, I need to understand which one you're...
Well, I'm just making, trying to be specific, Terry, just to say we'll pay for the lieutenant and the firefighter.
Lieutenant.
We'll amend the contract so that we're paying for the, basically two of them out of the three, but we'll let them pay for the captain, we'll pay the lieutenant and the firefighter that are assigned at that, at that fire station.
I think to Mr. Gray, we do not reflect the lieutenant on here because we're paying for that now already.
Okay.
So this just reflects what the current contract...
That's what I was missing.
I'd say the lieutenant is not stayed in here because we're already covering that, but the two positions the town is currently paying for are identified in the agenda summary.
Captain and the firefighter, and you want, you're proposing to pay for the firefighter?
The firefighter, yeah.
Which is a $65,000.
And the thought process there, y'all, is just simply, oh, it would have been doing anyway if they were not incorporated. And when you look at the number of calls, I think it's a fair way to treat the town of Kershaw and keep relations good there.
I think it was, but it was appropriate that I got, they sent a newsletter out, and I saw that they got so much money, they don't have any tax mileage this year.
Yeah, they, they hold their mileage, they do, as we should.
So, so it's not like they're broke.
No, they're, they're, I go to their meetings, Terry, and their budget is like to the penny, and they watch every one of them.
It was good of them to send that newsletter.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I, I understand all this, what you're trying to do and everything, but I, but we done voted on this, and it just come in a little late in the year on our budget. And our budget is approved, and it's done, and I'm not for changing it this year. If they want to come back for us next year, that's fine and dandy, but not this year.
Chairman, I, you know, we do support three firefighters at the city of Lancaster, and those were, they were, they were put there for helping moving equipment and stuff around, I think specifically in helping the city, but I think part of that equipment has been moved out of the city and is now already under control of the county fire. So...
That is wrong. That, they, those three firefighters run rescue through the whole county. They, they one on each shift, and when they, a extrication at a, at a wreck, what those, the city will send one guy out with one of the county guys. That's how that works. We don't, that's how it's done. We pay for that, but they there. But they're protecting us because we don't have a rescue squad no more. We need that, people that is experienced in extrication.
Well, I think every station has people that is experienced in extrication. Now, they may be bringing equipment out for that.
Yeah, our arrangement, our arrangement with the city of Lancaster is that we do provide three firefighters in lieu of them responding outside the city limits for fire calls.
That's correct.
And is that not what we're trying to accomplish here with Kershaw?
Because they're, they're answering calls outside their city. Majority of their calls are outside the city.
If, if this moves forward, would somebody need to make an amendment to that? This would move forward with a resolution in the next, in our next regular call meeting?
Yeah, on August 14th, you're going to adopt the resolution tonight, and we bring forward the budget amendment on the 14th.
I would like, you know, for Ms. McGriff to have a chance to make her say...
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Luis has his hand up to say something.
Thank you. How many calls are, of those that are outside of Kershaw are happening within Lancaster County?
I think it's 80% outside. Is that correct, Mr. Blackman?
No, 65% based on this document here, are outside of the Kershaw town limits.
No, no, no. Out of those, out of those 65% that are outside of the town of Kershaw limit, how many of those 65% are within Lancaster County?
All of them are.
All of them?
Yeah.
They're not, they're not service calls to other adjacent kind of municipalities or counties?
Only if there's a mutual aid call.
Yes. You know how our, how our services kind of address calls sometimes that are outside of our jurisdiction?
Only if there's, only if there's a mutual aid call, but roughly these are within Lancaster County, or if there's a mutual aid call.
Okay, so the 65% are within Lancaster County?
Outside the town limits.
Correct, but within Lancaster County.
And Mr. Chairman, I want to make sure, I think we're correct, the attorney can correct me, that you can make this resolution, or you make this vote tonight, and it is in effect. It does not need a budget amendment because other actions you've taken after executive session or whatever to authorize or direct, the action happens. So whatever action you take will be effective today.
I, I had, thank you for that clarification, clarification, Mr. Mostell. So how many agreements like this do we have in place?
We have, we have fire service agreements with the city of Lancaster and the town of Kershaw, and then we have sheriff's agreements as well with the town of Kershaw.
And we have some pool agreements as well, I thought, and some other agreements.
Yeah, we have, we also have training agreements with the city. We do have pool agreements. We have parks and rec agreements with the different towns and different areas. So we have multiple intergovernmental agreements on different services and planning, different services.
And Van Wyck, what are we doing fire service there?
They don't have a, it's volunteer county service. They're not providing anything.
We're providing any, any pay would be on top of their volunteer group, just like the others.
Well, they have a fee district, so any pay would come from the fee district, which includes town of Van Wyck, or residents from the town of Van Wyck.
So I guess my question is, what happens if other parties ask to renegotiate their What's, what's our practice going forward?
They will be brought before council for your consideration. The city of Lancaster one, I'm not sure how many years we've had it, but it's been at least six, I think. If you're talking specific to fire service, again, we just have those two. But yeah, we're going to have conversations, again, with the town of Kershaw about planning services and different things. So every request, this was requested by the town, we will bring every request to you. Or if there's some that staff wants to initiate, we'll bring to council as well.
Right. So are we opening the door to ask folks to come to us with renegotiations for contracts if we move forward with this?
Yes.
Why wouldn't they? I mean, if I was, I would.
It's any other municipality could have a similar request. Yeah.
Yeah. To Mr. Mosteller's concern, I just think this is coming in, one, pretty late. I think we're opening the door to everyone then coming in and saying, well, if you're going to renegotiate with Kershaw, we've got our contracts that we want to negotiate. I think we've had conversations recently about honoring the contracts that we enter into, and I think that's what we do.
And you do have, to that point, you do have a request from the town of Heath Springs about the county taking over a park. That has been communicated to y'all, and I'm having to meet with the administrator there. So there, there are other situations where certainly municipalities can ask, and we'll bring it forward for consideration.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Any other discussion?
You had mentioned you'd like to have this discussion when Mr. McGriff was here, so I don't know if...
Do you think you take, we have six members. We conduct, that's, that's our normal course of doing business, and let's, let's go ahead and decide this council's elected to make decisions.
Well, is this going to be in line with, when we talk about these ones, we need to treat all these municipalities the same. Is this in line with what we do for Lancaster?
Our current fire contract with the city of Lancaster, I think this is in line, meaning the three positions that we support, and they agree to respond outside the district. We agree to assign personnel to Kershaw, they agree to also go outside the district.
So they're equitable, given the size of the population. I mean, I think when we, when we get into these requests, my personal opinion, we ought to be consistent and fair and treat them all the same. I mean, I just think, so that's my take on this. So I'm trying to figure out if this, what we're doing for Kershaw is in line for what we're doing for Lancaster as far as from an equity point of view.
All right. Anything else?
And what's the answer? Yes?
Don't have the hard numbers on it.
Terry, without knowing the numbers of the city of Lancaster, that statistically, that'd be hard for me to answer, but, you know, just, just based on our, we do have data here looking at us, and, and I do think about the fact that this fire station would be there anyway if the town was not incorporated, and we would be paying all three of the positions if, if they were not incorporated.
So if Van Wyck comes and says, hey, we want you to pay for a firefighter, you would pay for one?
And on all the facts and circumstances, how many calls they have, whatever needed. And the other part is, I'm still confused on what we think the fire service is going to look like in five years, because if I did know that, I could better answer your questions in that regard, but we don't have a definitive plan.
I think it's going to be more battalion.
This, this is precisely my concern. We're opening the door to a lot of other conversations.
But we need to be planning now what we're going to be paying for then.
Mr. Luis, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm saying, these are the exact conversations that I'm concerned about. We're opening the door to a bunch of other conversations on things that we may not be ready to do. And then, Mr. Blackman, I know you've talked about the costs that we would have, but the town of Kershaw decided to incorporate themselves. So these are costs that would not be borne by the county because they have incorporated on their own. So the $40,000 figure is part of what they agreed to would be cost on them that our fire department is currently paying for them, which I don't believe we are obligated to pay.
All right.
This would be effective immediately, require a budget amendment, is that correct? No budget amendment?
No budget amendment. You can make this through your vote tonight, will be enforced action.
So where's that money coming from?
Stipulate, fund balance, it's outside the budgeted amount, so fund balance.
So we can pass this and not decide where the money's coming from?
You instruct the administrator to expend for this contract.
I'd be much happier if this was effective next year.
I don't think we're ready to vote. Roll call, please.
Terry Graham.
Opposed.
Billy Mosteller.
Opposed.
Jose Luis. Steve Harper.
Or.
Alan Blackman.
Or.
Brian Carnes.
Or.
It's three to three.
We have a three to three tie, so at this point, this fails. Now, let me ask a question. When something like this happens, what is a three to three tie? There's a motion to reconsider on a lot of stuff. How, i- is it possible for something to be reconsidered at the next meeting with a three to three tie? Just asking parliamentary procedures.
Come on, Steve, you're clouding the mud.
I said yes, yes, yes.
How would that happen if...
It's a motion to reconsider.
By someone?
By someone who was on the quote prevailing side, so someone who, because it died, opposed.
Does it have to be on the agenda?
Oh, okay. So it would have to be, okay. All right. Do I have a, that concludes our discussion for today. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
A move?
Second.
All in, roll call, please.
Roll call for adjournment.
I apologize. Terry Graham.
Approve.
Brian, Billy Mosteller.
He dropped off.
He sure did.
That must mean he approved.
Jose Luis.
Approve.
Steve Harper.
Or.
Alan Blackman.
Or.
Brian Carnes.
Approved.
We have unanimous approval to adjourn.